I'm here.
Okay.
On the minutes that I sent out, I forgot to add in the alert amount for the abatements, so I corrected that and sent it out to you guys. But I just wrote it in on the printed copy that I gave you guys, so it is fixed.
Okay, it's 10 o'clock. We'll call it ordered. It's down inside Floyd's foot. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There were no correspondence except personal mail to the commissioners. We'll look at the minutes. Are there any corrections or additions? I don't have any. Alexis, do you have anything?
I don't see anything. I'm just finishing up the last paragraph here. I don't really see anything. I'm moved to approve the minutes from April 15th, 2019.
I'll second. Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of 2000, or April 15th, 2019. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Dawn, did you have any additional stuff for us today?
No.
Okay.
I said everything there, but can't do it.
And you have scheduled two interviews for tomorrow, right?
Yes, Tuesday. And I think I sent each of you guys a message about that.
Are you done?
One and 2:30.
One and 2:30?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. I have an appointment at 3 o'clock here in Lincoln, so I may have to leave early. But I need to keep. Are you going to be present tomorrow, Alexis?
I am not. I'm going to call in again.
I, we need to talk about the job offer we made to Human Resources, and I do not feel comfortable doing that with you on the phone. I think you need to be present, and I also think it needs to be an executive session. We're going to make an offer, redo that offer, so I guess...
Can we call a special meeting for Wednesday?
I cannot the rest of the week. I am committed to other activities. I know I am on Friday and Wednesday and probably Thursday, too. I haven't quite got all that done, but Wednesday is definitely out. So I, whether we just wait till next Monday...
What about just doing it tomorrow, though? I mean, we've had our turn on the phone for executive session.
Yeah, but that's a little different where he's in an office and he is bound legally. It makes me uncomfortable to hold executive sessions with open phones. I'm not comfortable doing that.
I understand your concern. I think the only issue is we're just discussing money, which is going to become a public record anyhow, but that's okay. We can do it next Monday, I guess, if you're available.
It won't become public record until we hire the person and establish a salary. That's what I'm saying, and I don't know that we want our negotiations out in public. Or take a chance that they come out in public.
Our only other option would be to allow Dawn to make the proposal based on our own individual correspondence with Dawn. I mean, otherwise, we can do it Monday.
I think we need to wait until we're all three in the room. That's my feeling. I think Dawn could call her and tell her that we were unable to meet as a team this week, and we will do it on Monday.
Fine by me.
I don't think it... Dawn, did you type up a salary proposal that you sent her or faxed her?
Yes, I did. Do you guys want a copy?
I think probably we ought to have a copy of that. I guess you could email it to Alexis and Randy, but I need a hard copy, please.
Yes, you can email me.
Yeah, me, too, if you want to, Dawn. The other thing, Alexis, is we had those board appointments. We had a couple volunteers. Do we want to move forward? I think it's important the hospital board be a member, be appointed as quickly as possible.
Yes, and I did pick up the bylaws and read them last week, and we do not have to stick to any particular district distribution, and we did have the advertisement in the paper. So I think it's appropriate to assign, I honestly forget who the woman was. I believe it was a woman who wrote in and said she was interested, and the other ones who wrote in for their positions. I think it's fine if we move forward with those appointments.
I had someone come to me about the hospital board.
Well, we have two seats, so...
Oh, there are? Okay. Because I know we had one person volunteer to be on hospital...
Do we have two seats to hide them?
We have Jack Crispin's seat, I think just one.
Just one seat's open, right?
Yes.
I think just one, Alexis.
Oh, okay, then we'll have to talk about, okay. So we have one letter from last week, and then you had someone approach you? Did they write anything down, Randy? Mr. Lemon, I should say?
No, I know him personally, though, in town, and you do, too, and we all do. But I think we need to think about them, also.
Okay, so then I can have them write in a letter for consideration, since we have something in writing from the other applicants.
Okay, I'll tell them to do that.
Please.
Sure. I'll get with them this week and have them do that. The rest of them, I'm not, nothing against or no problem with, but I had one person on the hospital, like I said, requesting hospital board, so I'll have them write in a request for that. Okay, David is here. We'll just move on with David until we get sorted through these appointments. Need to visit with Dawn, so we don't get doubled up here.
Okay.
Yes, David, welcome. We're not giving you door prizes today, David, sorry. You keep giving us paper, though. Paper, paper, and more paper.
I'd like to have you informed.
I know, that's good.
Again, I've handed you information pertaining to my activities since the last time I spoke to you on March, excuse me, 8th. On March 20th, I participated in a tabletop exercise with the Health Department, Lincoln County Hospital, Lincoln Park Manor, and the Home Health Agency from Lincoln Park Manor. The after-action report has been completed by the Health Department Administrator, and we are working on having an after-action meeting to discuss correctional items that came up through the exercise. With that, also, Russell County, Osborn County, and Osborn, Russell, and Ellsworth were also in the regional tabletop exercise. On Saturday, March 23rd, Lincoln County hosted a full-scale exercise with numerous agencies involved, inspecting the core capabilities of Lincoln County Hospital, Lincoln Park Manor, Lincoln Fire Department, and the EMS division here. We have completed the after-action meeting on Friday, April 12th, with discussion of what changes can be corrected that were identified as gaps. On Tuesday, March 26th, I attended the North Central Regional Homeland Security Meeting in Beloit. Topics of discussion were four-year grant information, and again, not four-year, but grant information pertaining to year 15, 16, 17, whatever, grant funding projects. Discussion of the light tower generator project was rolling into message boards for each county. Would Lincoln County find it valuable and usable to have a light tower within the county? Once the piece of equipment has reached its warranty period, then the county assigned to that piece of equipment is responsible for upkeep and any monetary funding required to keep that piece of equipment operational. And again, that's a discussion that we can have. I don't have to know that information within this year, but that is coming down the road. At the corner with the KHP, he gave information about the state preparedness report activity.
What is this light tower generator?
It's currently housed in the Barnard Fire Station. Again, it was regional homeland security funded money. Again, a big generator on wheels with the light tower that pulls up and it can go up and down.
So it's a portable?
Yes, yes.
Portable, okay.
And again, it came with a spider box and also a 100-foot extension cord to run off the generator.
All right, okay, that's what you're talking about.
Yes, sir. On Wednesday and Thursday, March 27th and 28th, I attended a full-scale exercise hosted by Kansas All-Hazard Incident Management Team at Crisis City. I attended and got some of my task work, my task book completed, which once complete with exercise or real-life events, then I will be a deployable resource assigned to the Kansas All-Hazard Incident Management Team. My specific position with the All-Hazard Incident Management Team is as a safety officer. Thursday, April 4th, I attended the Wilson Lake Master Plan Meeting with discussion pertaining to the lake and what the lake can improve for its infrastructure and things that would improve guests' overall usage of the facility and what they have to offer. Tuesday, April 9th, I attended CRMCS training with Sherri Salter from the Health Department to update training and usage of the state system for tracking resources. Comprehensive Resource Management and Credentialing System is what the CRMCS stands for. It is a resource management and situational awareness tool that combines many systems to increase effectiveness and efficiency of emergency services. At its core, it is an intelligent accountability system that allows responders to tag, track, and report on assets during incidents or pre-planned events. Wednesday, April 10th, there was a fire south of Lincoln in the area of a farm stand. I responded to this incident. Later in the evening, from 6:45 to 7 o'clock, I was on the radio and monitoring the storm that came in and left Lincoln County rapidly. However, there was no severe thunderstorm issued for Lincoln County. Tuesday, April 16th, I responded to an accident at the intersection of K-14 and 18, provided traffic control by assisting under Sheriff Florence. This incident happened at 10:34 in the morning. Thursday, April 18th, I responded to a grass fire located at 2362 North 30th Road in the Hunter Fire District. Once I arrived on scene, there was a Hunter bus truck that had the fire under control on the levee where the source had reignited. Friday, April 19th, there was a page for Barnard Fire at 116 to respond to agency assist to a grass fire located in Mitchell County. At 124, there was a page for Beverly and Hunter to assist on that fire. At 140, Lincoln First World was paged, and at that point, I responded after stopping at the EMS station to get another case of water. Once en route, I communicated with the Denmark Fire Department Chief and asked him to send a truck. While responding north on K-14, there was K dot work going on, so I made the responding Lincoln units aware of the situation. While responding, I contacted the Mitchell County Emergency Manager and found out that he was in Oklahoma. He told me that he had spoke to his sheriff and that I would be arriving on scene and take over IC. Once arriving on scene, I communicated with the law enforcement officer from Mitchell County. I evaluated and gave directions for the responding resources, directions on where to stay and actively fight the fire. Sunday, April 20th, Lincoln County was placed in a severe thunderstorm warning, and I was communicating with storm spotters on the phone and the radio until about 10:15, when the warning was lifted for Lincoln County. Coming up this Monday is the Incident Management Class in the basement of Lincoln Park Manor from 1:00 to 5:00. Today is the last day that you can sign up for this training. Then on Wednesday, May 22nd, from 1:00 to 2:00, at the Finch Theater, is a Regional Mitigation Plan Kickoff Meeting with Mitchell, Ottawa, and Osborn Counties also in attendance. And that concludes the activities that I've been participating in.
Going back to the Wilson Lake Master Plan Meeting, is there anything that Lincoln County will, infrastructure that Lincoln County may need to address or do or...
Not necessarily pertaining to. Discussion was had, again, with all the water that was recently deposited in North Dakota and on South and down the rivers, and the flooding incident in Nebraska. They talked that both Wilson and Tuttle Creek, the conservation level is up, Lake Tuttle Creek is up 43 feet over conservation level. They're releasing water, and Wilson Lake is also up. They didn't give the number, but they had previously communicated with myself and with the Public Works Director about, hey, we're going to be releasing water, and that was when we were receiving all that rain, and the Slane River was already up, and there was just concern about it overflowing its banks, but that didn't happen. And just infrastructure as far as electrical usage, road improvement, overall guest services that they can communicate with to the public is how that was handled, the whole meeting.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. At this time...
I guess...
Go ahead.
I'm wondering, have we established, like, as far as your office hours, or we talked about start time and end time, and we also changed the status of your vehicle because we had read the statute pertaining to how we have been taxing, or I should say, not taxing as like a fringe benefit. So what, where are we in this process of realigning what the guidelines are for this department?
And again, pertaining to that, I would request to go into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss the job of David Dill pursuant to KSA Works 754319 to B1 for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel to reconvene in the basement meeting room with just the Board of County Commissioners for a duration of 15 minutes to resume in the commission meeting room.
And David, I appreciate that, but I am uncomfortable holding executive sessions with one of the commissioners on the phone that we do not know if there's people, other people, present. I think it's a matter that needs to certainly be confidential, and I guess maybe we could do this next week if you desire help.
I will check my schedule, and again, I CS class the afternoon.
I'm very reluctant, and Alexis is aware that my reluctance of doing that.
If you could schedule yourself in the next week's agenda, that may work.
All right. That's all I have for the commission.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Are you OCC? Is Kelly going to come with, be with us, you think?
She had mentioned that she would see us, so I'm guessing maybe she's...
Since you're here and we're running a little ahead, I'll go see if Kelly can come in, and we'll take care of it.
Can I get you guys a name? I was Michelle Griffin, with 102 and Ian.
Yeah, there was one. Ladies, welcome out to them. I'm sorry. I put a chair for you, Kelly.
I'll have to go behind you a little bit.
Okay. Randy must have stepped out a while.
He did, he said he needed a break.
All right, I'll be back. Okay. I'm Alton Wallace.
Hi, Michelle Griffin.
Michelle.
Claire Mullen.
Carrie.
Hi, Michelle.
Claire.
And the other commissioner, Alexis Flew, is on the phone.
Hi, Alexis.
Hi, there.
We'll put one of her cards in your pile, Alexis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you receive the papers already as well? The agreements and the specifications?
I think, I think Kelly gave us a copy of that, yeah.
I'll just let you have those, just in case.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Well, I'll just kind of start from the beginning about how this came about, and then we can rather go into discussion.
Yes, please.
So I'm the Mobility Manager for North Central Kansas. I work for the Portonian Transit District, and Michelle's the Transportation Director for OCC. And we have come about a very unique opportunity. Blue Cross and Blue Shield has agreed to sponsor bike sharing for North Central Kansas. That would include eight communities currently, Salina, Minneapolis, Concordia, Belleville, Minnato, Beloit, Lincoln, Ellsworth. So we have decided to partner with a company called Zaxter. They currently operate the Bike Share Program that is in Wichita, but they are a nationwide company. They do regional bike sharing in the urban setting, but they've never done a regional bike share in the rural setting, so this would be a very unique opportunity, the first of its kind. So through this program, Zaxter did a feasibility study for each community to kind of determine what they think would be the appropriate number of bikes to place in each community to kind of get the program started and to just really gauge and see the usage that could come about from this. So Lincoln was given the number of five bikes that felt would be good to start out with for the community to see how it kind of goes. So with this program, OCC would be the, kind of just the operating business of it, but Zaxter does all of the maintenance. They come out and they maintenance every bike every two weeks. So how this would work is the individual would have their smartphone. They download an app on their phone, input their information. Each bike has GPS on it. It's actually locked into the bike rack until the individual puts the code that's on the back of the bike into the app, and then it gives them a code back to release the bike. They are charged a fee. There's a couple different options that they can do. It's pay-as-you-go. They can also do an annual membership, and then there's also discounted rates for students. So unless the individual does not return the bike, then they continue to be charged. The reason that we chose to go with Zaxter was because we didn't want bikes just being thrown places. We wanted it to be required that people return these bikes. We did it for the cities specifically because we want your communities to continue to look nice. We don't want bikes just thrown places. We didn't want the cities to be held responsible for any of that. So by going this way, it makes people have to return them back to the rack. We are kind of looking at a launch date right now of June 1st. We already have approval from Concordia. They are, city council signed the agreement last Wednesday. We present to Salina today, and I'm very confident the city manager has already stated that he sees this no problem. We also present to Belleville tonight, same situation. Their council is very excited. Beloit, they aren't even presenting to their council. They already kind of had this in their plans, so the city manager already has the approval to go ahead and sign and move forward with the rack locations. And then Minneapolis, Minnato, and Ellsworth, their meetings aren't until next month, but they're very confident and excited about the program. So in your packet, there's a spec of what the bike rack looks like, the sizing and dimension is the very last page. So you would be getting a six-rack station. The reason for that is they always, you know, if you were to get bikes, additional bikes later down the road, there would be options, you know, say, if somebody takes a bike from one rack and goes to the other rack and wants to return it, there's always additional space to place the bike rack. But we need a flat concrete surface. After discussions with Kelly, we kind of came about the decision that we felt that the county courthouse was the best location to place it, very visible, able to ride on the sidewalks, but unfortunately, there's no extra concrete space here. So I believe, Kelly, you said that there's a grants opportunity, correct?
Yeah. I guess I kind of thought that, depending on if you guys approve this or not, for paying for that, the web fund, their next meeting is Wednesday, so I thought maybe we could put in an application to the web fund for money for the concrete. I don't know if the county staff, if there's somebody within the Highway Department that could pour it and do it if we got the money for the concrete or if we need to...
Good question. Is there a reason that the city park hasn't been considered?
I guess I thought about several different options, and I ran it by some people in town because I just didn't want this to be my decision of telling where to recommend. To me, the city park, although a natural fit, it's kind of out of the way. There has been vandalism issues in the past there. It's kind of dark, so I just kind of worry that it's out of sight, out of mind, and I just think for this, and this is just my opinion, but I just don't think that that would be the best location, having it somewhere downtown, somewhere visible, somewhere lighted, well-lighted, will reduce, you know, any chances of vandalism in that way, so.
I guess I'm just not in favor of the county shouldering the responsibility of what goes on the city, because you're saying the only, the only bike station is going to be in the city of Lincoln, correct?
At this time, yes. That's not to say that there could be potential to put a rack, say, in Sylvan Grove down the road, or additional racks here, or whatever the case may be. This was just the, this was just the beginning of it.
Do you think there's big enough demand in Lincoln for four of this?
I think you might be surprised. There's always that if you don't bring it, you don't know. There's always that if you don't bring it, you don't know. There's also, if people probably don't think that it would ever be an option to get it here, being that we are in rural communities. So they don't ever ask for things like this.
Who buys the bicycles?
Blue Cross, Blue Cross pays for all of that.
And what, and what about vandalism is?
Zaxter holds all liability insurance, so the city would not, city, county, nobody would be held responsible for that. Zaxter.
So if they rent one of these bikes and crash it into a car, the county's not responsible?
No.
Or?
Or the city.
Or the city.
It's the individual that is using the bike, they take it up their own, own risk.
Okay.
Wasn't the master plan that was developed and we're considering adopting as a commission, weren't there trails that were associated with that, Kelly?
There's more at this point, kind of just loops. There's a loop around the city park here, there's a loop around in Sylvan Grove. Some sidewalk improvements in both Lincoln and Sylvan. We would love to get to a point where we have kind of a cross-county trail or bike route or something like that, but as a committee, we've kind of thought that's more of the long-range plan. So we haven't really got to that far yet. What we've put together, that's what we'll be talking about, is more the trails for small loops.
Are these bikes like trail bikes or?
Yes, they have different speeds.
So, so they could ride out in the gravel country roads or in town though, like a cross bike thing, you know?
But those trails are going to come straight to the park from the map, correct?
The, the one kind of loop that we have here in Lincoln is, yes, a loop around the park. But I guess I see somebody who's going to be renting a bike is probably going to want to do more than just do a one-mile loop around the park for an hour.
They could drive into city of Lincoln, like any other with a bicycle does.
I mean, obviously with Blue Cross, they're very much, you know, they want this to be health wellness aspect, but we understand it from a multimodal perspective and economic development. You could use this as a very good marketing tool when you're having events or wanting to.
For tourism.
Right, tourism, things like that. To be able to say that you have this is going, I think, going to be a really key component in helping Lincoln move their word and.
I am a little worried about vandalism though because you're going to have bikes sitting out right at night and, you know, kids or high school kids on a Friday night.
I understand that, but I mean, if you think about big cities that also have this and they.
They're okay.
Right, I mean Wichita started out with a hundred bikes. Granted, I understand it's a very different setting, but even in the bad parts of Wichita, you still have those types of risks. It's, you're going to have it no matter where you put it.
Do you have any idea what this would cost for that slab and put, set this whole thing up?
So just for the slab, we've had to look at some other concrete for counties and we're figuring it's roughly between $600 and $800 for the size of slab.
That would be the county's expense?
If the grant does not go through, we would then ask if you would be willing to.
And that includes putting up these racks and all that stuff?
That, there's no charge for that. It's all included in what Blue Cross is paying. The only thing that you would need to supply is the concrete to be able to place it. Zaxter's company, they contract individuals to maintenance these bikes, install the bikes, take care of them. So there's nothing that the city or county would have to do. That's the nice thing with it is you're getting about $10,000 in free bikes, you know, for free, basically, minus the concrete that we would need to place.
Oh, I think the idea is wonderful. When I moved to Kansas, all I had for a year was a bike and I rode it, I mean, miles and miles of dirt road. I'm just not sold on the idea that it's the county's responsibility as much as the city's responsibility. Have you been to the ci, have you been to the city?
We have not. The problem was is we were looking for areas that would have the space, the right of way, the area to place this and we would love to place it just on a, somewhere down on the street where there's already space, but there's not the adequate amount of space to place it without pouring concrete.
And I guess, you know, when they asked for recommendations on where to go, I mean, I kind of felt like, I didn't want to send them on a wild goose chase and have them talk to the city and, or here or whatever, so I kind of thought, well, this is from my perspective and from some of the different people that I've talked to, from their perspective, what's, what's one's the best one? So we've, we've kind of talked about different places, but the courthouse square, somewhere on the courthouse square seemed like the best place for it, so I recommended that they come here first.
And also I think you could, the bikes are going to be ridden outside of the city limits of Lincoln. Could be ridden all over the county, right?
Right.
So it's, it is a county issue, I think Alexis, even if it, even if this slab is located in Lincoln possibly. It's not like there only going to be riding bikes in Lincoln City.
And I think the opportunity, you know, like I said, for Sylvan Grove or another area to have additional bikes down the road.
But the lake, the lake is where you should have them. Because that'd be where, that's more of a touristy thing.
Sure, and, and Blue Cross has been very open, they're very excited about this, to be able to offer something like this and they're very open that, you know, down the road, they're open to adding additional bikes, adding additional counties. After Concordia announced that they were, you know, had signed off, we've already had other communities reach out and ask how they can be a part of this. So.
I'm not against the idea at all, I just, I don't see how the park wouldn't be prime when you have people going to the park for recreation purposes and we're trying to create an interlooping pattern of trails that would include the park. I don't see how that's really considered out of the way. I mean, if you're going to get on a bike, it's three more blocks to the park from the courthouse, but, you know, that's just my, that's my personal perspective, I take my kids to the park. So if I was going to get on a bike, it wouldn't be any different driving to the park than driving to the courthouse. And then, you know, you have people, I guess the idea is you have people coming to drive to park their cars to get on the bike if it's going to be people from out of town.
We kind of, so in Salina, we looked at many different places to put it and what we're focusing on in Salina is connecting the first mile, last mile with our transit system. So that's kind of the perspective that we took with all of the counties was how we could put it in a spot that makes sense for what you're talking about, personal use for health and wellness, but also how we could put it in a spot that would allow people to use it for a transportation option. So that's, I think, kind of how this conversation went with having it in more of a downtown location that would, it would provide people an opportunity to use it for getting around town. The bikes do have baskets on them, so if they needed to do shopping or, you know, whatever errands they needed to run downtown, they could do that. But then they could also use it at the park and do it. So it kind of fits in both locations, helps us work on both of those, using it as transit and also using it for exercise, health and wellness, whatever. That's kind of what we were thinking.
What, has Beloit decided, I mean, of places where they?
They're putting one downtown. And then they are putting, considering putting one at N C K on their campus. That's their second option and they're still talking about another location because they have so many different ideas of where they want to put it. But I know that the downtown is for sure one of their locations. So, and that's kind of how.
What rents are going to be charged?
So we're still negotiating that, but we understand that with it being in a rural setting, we need to make it very, very reasonable so that people will use it. So we're looking at roughly a dollar, you know, to $3.
You have to have a smartphone to use them.
Yeah, right.
I mean, are we, is it not to encourage like a less carbon footprint transportation? Because I assume if you can afford a smartphone, you probably have another mode of transportation.
I think there's a lot of ways that you can look at it, so yes, that could be one. The other is just adding another transportation option here in Lincoln for people that might need one. I mean, then the third option, of course, is, you know, the tourist power. The fourth option is health and wellness for people. I mean, there's a lot of different ways that you can look at this.
See, I'm not against it, I think it's a good idea, where to put it is the issue, I think here. The park, park would be good, but I, I kind of agree with Kelly that we're, I don't know, by the old boy scout cabin, but that's out of the way and it'd be easily to be vandalized at night. But where was you, if you would want to do it here at the courthouse, where, right up front here or what?
Probably not right up front, but I was kind of thinking down here, this corner might be a good spot. You know, there's a big tree there, you've got the.
Are you talking about the southwest corner?
Yes, southwest corner. So I know you've got the memorial there and there's kind of a tree there, but I thought maybe if you're kind of on the other side of that tree.
That would be in public, eye, a lot, a lot of light, it's so it's.
Yeah.
Less vandalism opportunity.
Yes, and it's, it's open.
Yes.
Are these bikes not locked in, so nobody can steal them?
They are locked. You have to unlock it via the app. Once you input the code from the back of the bike into the app, then it gives you a code back that you enter into the bike and then that's how it unlocks.
Is there any lighting down at the park that could provide a lighting there?
Well, I mean, there, there's a little bit, but the park is kind of dark. It's something that I've actually talked with the city about, you know, the bathroom, they have vandalism issues down there. It's just, it's just kind of dark. I mean, there, there is a light there by, oh, I think by the parking lot, kind of cool corner.
I agree, I agree.
What kind of vandalism are we experiencing? I haven't been reading about this. What kind of vandalism is it and how often? I mean, is this a problem that should be addressed? That sounds scary.
No, I, I mean, I don't think it's anything major and I don't know all the details. I just know that the city, it's, it's something that they, they struggle with.
Well, have there been arrests made?
No, I, I don't know, I don't think there's cameras or anything down there.
Well Alexis, the park is where, for years here in Lincoln, kids go down, high school kids primarily, and I don't know if they still do as much, but it's dark, it's out of the way. And you're going to set them up for vandalism down there because they're going to, first thing they're going to see them do bikes and somebody's going to mess with them. Because I just, it's my opinion, that's just human nature for kids drinking and stuff like that, that's happening. But so if you take the opportunity and don't put it in front of them and put them in a lighted area downtown, you're not going to have that problem, in my opinion. Alexis, I agree, I like the park too. Nothing against the park, I just think you're opening yourself up for more problems. And I don't think we have that bad of vandalism problems, but if you, you don't want to give them ammunition to create vandalism.
Well, I certainly don't want the vandalism happening on the courthouse lot.
I don't, I don't think that would as much because it's right in town, a lot more people, a lot more cars, a lot more lighting. And of course it could, anything can always happen, but, but that park is where, you know, is where people are partying and stuff and anytime you get that going on, you're going to have that happen, or more likely to. Cindy, you got an issue?
We do have a swimming pool down there and the baseball park and the tennis courts, so to me, maybe, maybe the issue is under, is finding that we need to have more activity, lighting and things in our park so the park is used more, not at night by vandals or whatever that is. But there is parking if you kids who leave their bikes at the baseball and at the swimming pool, the racks are there. But they're not with this program, which I, I think is a wonderful program. But I would like to see, we look at other issues at the park. We talked years ago about putting more sidewalks in, making it more accessible and those things.
Well, and that's, that's part of this kind of master plan that we're talking about with the trails and sidewalks and.
That would be important, join in with that master plan to make it happen.
Because our plan is really that this program expands and that next year we would be able to bring in another rack of five bikes for Lincoln and I think if we chose to do it downtown, the park could definitely be on the list for doing it next year if we had some of those concerns alleviated, you know, or, or whatever. I think the other reason why we talked about down here is because we're on such a tight timeframe with this. We want to try to get this done by June 1 and maybe, you know, those things that we need to work on at the park, we're not going to be able to do before June, so.
My other question too, is there multiple racks in these communities where I take a bike from this rack and I can deposit in another rack?
Right, so.
And then the time quits and then when I want to go back from that track, I can pick up the bike, so I'm not charged for all the time I'm there? But we're only talking about one rack here in Lincoln.
Right, at this time.
I, you know, I can see that, you know, our high school is quite a ways away that it would be an option for kids that live in the downtown area to pick up a bike at the courthouse and ride to the high school and park their bike, but the way it is now, they would be charged all day, I guess. You know, so, so I, I can see, I can see a need for multiple racks.
Sure, sure.
You know, and I think even if we have a rack at the park as well as here, people can ride to the park, park their bike, or they can pick a bike up at the park, ride back uptown and park it, you know? I guess, you know, I, I think it's a good idea, but I think the big picture is that we need multiple racks eventually.
Yeah, that would be a long-term way for sure.
And I think getting, you know, if we could get the approval, get the first rack in, I think getting it here could also help kind of push the master plan forward. You can show that you've brought something new in, it's being used, it's being successful. This is proof why we need to move forward in getting these trails and connectivities between the communities, making it safer down in those areas, things like that. I think it would be a, a strong component that you could use to.
Now theoretically, they could rent one of these bikes and ride it from here to Beloit, turn it in up there, is that right?
Theoretically, they could do that.
Theoretically, they could, but.
Well, I just wonder if, if that would be part of it. In other words, do these bikes have to come back to Lincoln?
We don't have it set up that way, but I mean, we're really going to try to push for now for you to keep them in your communities.
Yeah.
Especially so that your community can use your five bikes, we can show the growth. We will have access to reporting by going through Zaxter. It will allow us to show who's using them, where they're being rode to, things like that, so that down the road with expansion and growth, we can say, okay, people are riding these bikes to this location very, very frequent. Maybe we need to put another rack here when we expand, things like that. So we'll be able to do that. Another thing is, is we'll be helping out with marketing. We'd love to hold different events here in the communities, do different things like that. So with the reporting software, we can acknowledge the people that are using it. I know that a lot of other programs that have this, they do a lot of different events and things like that and recognize the individuals that are, you know, they're top riders and things like that. So there's a lot that can be done with this in regards to that as well.
So I guess if, if we want the first rack to serve as a catalyst to prove the need, I am still wondering where would be the best location? Because if the courthouse location is, if, let's do positives and negatives. If the courthouse location positive is that it's more lighted and that it would be more available for transit use, then the negative is that it's not really somewhere someone's going to stop to use it for a family, family activity, you know, like go on a bike ride with your teenagers, et cetera. I'm personally thinking that the people that are going to start using them first will be your health and wellness, fitness people who would be using them at the park. That's me, because if I came to Lincoln and I was taking my young daughter on a bike ride, I would go to the park if I was going anywhere anyhow. So I don't know if we want the first rack to serve as a catalyst, where the best location is. I, I don't live in Lincoln, so I can't tell you how many people need that kind of transportation. Maybe there are a lot of people that need bicycle transportation, but I see it more in Lincoln as in activity for fun.
And I see it as a tourist thing too. A lot of the people that are into biking already have their own bikes around Lincoln, so they're not going to probably rent these. But your tourists, they come here, come out and they make right around Lincoln or wherever, I think that's more practical.
Yes, and I would say the courthouse is easier to find for something like that, if you're coming into town the other way, yeah.
But I agree with you too Alexis, I think the park could be a good place too. I only have the concern of the vandalism thing, but we could try it there, in my opinion. I'm not against it, I mean, it's.
No, I'm not against the idea at all. I think if we want it to take off though, it shouldn't be very strategic. I just, I, I am a person who would use a bike, I'm a person who's rented a bike in a city to get around, in a large city. However, in Lincoln, whereas I live another town over, I come to Lincoln to go to the park. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe I could be totally wrong, maybe there are quite a few people in Lincoln that want bicycle transportation to shop up and down Main Street, I don't know.
I, I don't either. That's a good question.
I, I, the two Airbnb people downtown here have said, you know, they, they've been, had questions before in terms of if there's a place to get a bike, rent a bike, you know, having the, the Airbnbs, the, the coffee shops, the, you know, if you've got a basket, so they can do some errands, so in a way, I think they would probably, those kinda people would probably be looking at it more out of downtown as opposed to going to the park to get one. I mean, I could be wrong.
Well, is this something, is this something in economic development which funds the pouring of the concrete for?
I can ask them, I guess, so in terms of the money for the concrete, the web fund has, their next meeting is Wednesday, so I thought we could put in an application for that. And then also the Post Truck Community Foundation, their deadline here is, is coming up in, in a week too. So, both of those in terms of funding seem like good opportunities. I have not asked my board if they would be willing to fund it, you know, I guess I thought we could try those two sources first, but you know, we need to have a place for it determined, so.
What do you think, Al, Joe, where would you do it?
I, I, I think that visibility, and it needs to be at the courthouse, I think the opportunity for it to be used, as she said with residents staying at those places, they're the ones that are probably going to be the first ones. We do have some historical sites in this town and it could be a Klein House or, or get around to those various places to see those things. So, I, I guess I, I have no problem of putting it at the courthouse, but I strongly think we need to think about putting more racks in so these bicycles can be moved throughout the city, you know.
I don't think it's-
And put a, put one down at the park eventually, I think it's gonna be a good idea, but I think to get it started, I think it's not going to be the locals so much as using it, I think it's going to be the people that are coming into town to, to visit and they're gonna be staying downtown and, and those are available, will be seen, and I have no problem with allowing the concrete to be poured, and I think Kelly has some good ideas of how we can get the money, so.
Well, I'd just like to suggest that we approve the actual final location, like the, where they're going to stake it out. I think we do need to look at that and consider anything that might have to do with our maintenance. Do you see what, do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, so-
Well, I think we, we, we will want to know where the site is, but I think-
The most accessible, you can get-
We have plenty of room, that's not a problem, we can, once that we approve this, I think we can determine the place that it's going to be after we stake it out, see it staked out.
That's my only request for it being placed at the courthouse.
Yeah, and, and we can finalize that, I guess, if we at least know it's gonna be on the stuffy event.
Yeah, it's hard to, hard to get very specific right now at a designated place, but we could approve this and then get really specific about that, yeah.
Yes, and say, if you'd be willing to say that yes, we would allow it on the courthouse, we can always come back at a later time, set up another meeting and then go and-
Show you the site.
Right.
Or, that's what's good for everyone.
Right, and then we, Kelly and I can work on the funding and get that figured out on and so.
I would entertain a motion to, to go ahead and agree to have a bike rack placed on the courthouse square somewhere.
So, so moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved and second that we, do you want this license signed?
You can review it and then if, um, you just wanna have Kelly email-
Sure, sure, yeah, we would, I would appreciate the attorney to look at it, make sure it's-
Yes, yes, that's totally fine, and then, you know, we'll sign our part and get you a copy back.
Okay, all right. You understand that Alexis?
Yes, yes.
That we're, we're going to, okay.
They gave us a license and rights, writing there.
Any other questions before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion is carried, thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very excited about this.
Yes.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Yeah.
Alexa, I'll go ahead, I'll tell her. Wanda's here Alexis, so I think we'll just go ahead and take her, cause she probably wants to get back on the road.
Sure.
Morning, Wanda.
Good morning, how are you?
I'm great, how about you?
Good, I'm good.
Great.
I killed some trees for you this morning.
Well, I'm sure you did.
You're making a pile for her, okay?
Yeah, I got a pile for you Alexis, here.
Okay. There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm here with, well, let me start out by saying I'm not asking for any money. Is that a good way to start?
You know better, you know, you know me, don't you?
That's the right way to start, isn't it?
I told you before.
Okay. Um, I'm here with the FY20 Comprehensive Plans for Community Corrections, the Adult and Juvenile Plan. We start with this funding allocation comparison sheet, it just shows you how many dollars we've, well, let me back up. For the comprehensive plans, the Department of Corrections always tells us, this is your allocation figure based on the funding formula, and that's based on how many offenders we have on probation and some other things. So, for the crucial services and the DUI funds, that's the amount that they told us to write the grant for and also on the juvenile allocation, which the juvenile allocation has not changed. The adult allocation, we received seven thousand, or well, actually less, seven thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and ninety-nine cents, so we took a cut on the adult side. The behavioral health grant is the adult, another adult grant we wrote, and then the reinvestment grant. Those are grants that are more program focused, that's the things they will, they tell you what kinda programs you can run and then you pick and choose and decide what works in your district. Now, those amounts, we wrote the grants for those amounts on the sheet, they will come in and scale that back because they, they did, they've done that, we've gotten it several years and they scaled back some things. So, we're pretty confident, I mean, we've been getting those for the last four years, behavioral health, so they like what we're offering, it's cognitive programs that we're offering in there. So, as far as any changes for FY20, staffing remains the same, the cut on the adult side that we're having to deal with is primarily through some office expenses, training funds, things like that. So, we didn't, not have to lay anyone off, we're being able to keep the same staff that we have. And then as far as program changes in the behavioral health grant, we've put in for, we wanna pilot a program for a group of offenders that are female, trauma type counseling, we would contract with two local providers and then we would transport offenders in from the other counties. That's, the behavioral health grant, that does cover transportation costs, you know, we have a really hard time running groups and programs in all six counties because we don't have the numbers. And some of the groups, in order to have fidelity of the group, you have to have so many members in the group, so-
May I interrupt here?
Sure.
My question is, does more program utilize any of the county bus services?
Um, when, when the schedule allows, they use the, no, I'm not certain exactly what you have in Lincoln County, but I know like the eighty-one, the bus that goes on the eighty-one route, offenders will use that and we've purchased touch cards for that in the past. But if we, if the offender, offender cannot get to a program, get to treatment, get to a cognitive program, we have county part-time drivers that we put in the county vehicle and that way they can transport those offenders. And so when we run the groups, we do the same.
So, are your groups in the evenings or are they all day?
Um, summer in the evening, some of the counseling that they go to at mental health centers or in Salina, they would have to go to Central Kansas Foundation or Central Kansas Mental Health, or all of our sex offender treatment is in Salina. Those are during the, most of those are daytime hours, so, you know, it's, it's a variety as far as the schedule, the, the groups are. Our in-house groups are run in the evening. So, really, there's not a lot of changes except if we get that behavioral health grant to fund that trauma group, that would be something new, otherwise it's everything else that we've been doing in the past, so.
What's the reinvestment grant, what, what does that?
That's for the ju, that's for juveniles and that again is a programming grant, that's to cover our in-house cognitive programs that we offer. We offer two programs right now and then we also have a mentoring piece where we have a staff person, she's part-time, she does the cognitive pieces with them, but also she organizes community service work projects in the various counties and then she will go and supervise the kids, actually, she's working right alongside them when they're doing the work.
Okay.
So, but that is just for, the reinvestment grant, that's just for juveniles, and the behavioral health grant, that's just for adults.
Okay.
So, I'm here today to, we need to get all six B O C Cs to sign our, the grant, and we had an advisory board meeting last week, they approved it, and then your advisory board rep is Jennifer O'Hare, she was at the meeting, and then the grant actually do make first in Topeka, but we have to get around to all six B O C Cs, so it takes two Mondays to do that. So, I have the signature pages here, are you the chair?
No, actually Alexis is, but I'll be signing today.
Okay.
I would entertain a motion for the chair to sign the, I've gotta read it, what is the call?
Well, there's, there's four, it's the FY20, Kansas Department of Corrections Comprehensive Plan Grants for Adult and Juvenile, and then the Behavioral Health Grant and the Reinvestment Grant.
Okay, did you get all that Alexis?
I did.
Okay. And I would entertain a motion to sign.
So moved, I'll make the motion to sign it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and second that we will sign the, the grants or the papers for community corrections.
I do have a question.
Uh huh.
Um, are you, is this a statutory obligation to have the Board of County Commissioners view or approve if they're going to be contributing to the funding?
Um, okay, it is, as far, okay, I'm not sure I understand the question. Is it, is it required by statute that you sign the grants, is that what you're asking me?
Sure, yes.
Yes, yes, it is required by statute as far as through the Community Corrections Act and how the money's downloaded to the counties through these grants, and we have an inter-local agreement with all six counties to provide one community corrections program for the 12 judicial district which encompasses all six counties, and so that's why it requires all six to sign it.
Okay, and I apologize because I am not physically present, but you just brought all that paperwork today?
No, I just brought the grants today, the inter-local agreements were signed back in probably eighty-nine, ninety.
So, you're asking for continuation of that?
No, I'm just asking for the, that the grants be signed for the FY20 fiscal year. We have to write, we have to write the grant.
Right, like you're statutorily obligated to get the Board of County Commissioners to sign to approve because you're, we're actually approving your budget according to what we're reviewing.
Right, you're approving the grants, yeah, our advisory board approves and then it comes to the six county commissioners.
And again, so I, so that's what you're handing us today, is your budget?
Yes.
Okay, um, maybe in the future, it would be helpful to get the budget the week before the approval. And don't, and, and please don't be alarmed, I'm just going to abstain because I can't sit in front of me, if you understand.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Obstain.
Motion carries.
Okay, and then on the second page.
Okay.
And there's Lincoln, offer Lincoln County.
A Lincoln County, you want me to sign in Lincoln, not in somebody else?
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Your reinvestment grant only has a signature for the host attorney, so that's why I'm not giving you that one, but-
I'm just gonna take this opportunity to get a civics lesson in here, that by our approval, we are practicing home rule which allows us to give permission to those who are going to be utilizing the tax money to do so in that way, and I think that's very interesting, I'm glad to hear that we are aware of the statutory obligation to do that because as a commissioner, my first term, I'm learning that we do have these statutory obligations on many levels and it's, it's the mechanism that was set into place with our republic to be able to approve from the bottom up.
I signed three times.
Okay, that's-
Is that right?
That's right. Dawn, do you wanna copy of this or do you want, when we get all six?
If you can, if I could just give you a couple of them.
Sure.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Wanda.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Okay.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Uh huh, thank you, bye-bye.
Okay, we're-
I wanna take a little five, I'm gonna go to the pot, I gotta drink a water, I thought I forgot.
All right.
Cause I got this cold, I can-
We're on recess for, till Randy gets back. Okay, Michael, I'm sorry.
Tanner. Yeah, we got it.
I'm sorry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Several updates for you this morning, Schneider Road gravel project is, all the gravel's been hogged, we just got a little bit of drift enough to finish it out with. OS eighty-seven's progressing along, I believe there's eleven working days left, I think they got guard rail and seed work and-
Some funnel grading and replacing the ripret.
Yeah, so, they should be close to being done on schedule, no problems there. OS one oh five, we're still very close on that, we just need to get the deck welded and surface material put in place and finish putting up our guard rail. This rain showers kinda held us up from tearing things up, getting in and out of there, but. Not too, too much of a problem there. I did have a question on, uh, the three-hundredth road going south of Bison, if that has ever progressed to, for a road closure.
Yeah, Dawn, where are we? Did you submit that stuff to Terr- or to Rhonda?
Yeah, I think she sent me, I'll look.
Okay, okay. Yeah, we're, we're moving on.
Got you.
Slowly, but sure.
I understand, totally. I think you guys were maybe aware last week since I wasn't here that we had a little accident with our dozer. And, um, give you guys an update on that. I believe it had some water, it was in the water four hours before we got it removed. Uh, there is some water in the transmission, we know that for sure. We're also checking all the other fluids, sending them in for analysis. And as of right now, it appears that the engine should be fine, no problem. I don't think it ever got underwater. Hydraulics and final drives are the other fluids that will be checked, and the antifreeze and everything else, you know, anything to be checked, we're gonna check. And hy- uh, electronics have been checked out and everything's good there. Foley's doing a pretty good job working with us on it, and K Camp has been down and looked at it and also visited with me and with Foley's. You know, potentially if there's anything down the future, potentially everybody's on the same page to understand what can cause what and, and the reasoning of, so.
Does K Camp, uh, would they help pay for this, if there's problems or?
Yeah, I believe they will. Will submit a plan.
I didn't know how that worked.
Is the driver okay?
Yes. A little shook up, but yeah.
So am I to understand that because we didn't have, I mean, we know we had a resignation from the person who was doing it. We didn't have anyone else that was necessarily doing it at any, at, at any particular, uh, frequency, correct? Is this like, uh, whoever can drive it, come work it today? Or how, was that the first day of operations and the last person who was driving resigned, or who's been operating this thing?
Uh, Gary Fuller's been operating it. He's, uh, I think he had been operating it for one or two days. He's probably the one that's got the most experience on a track machine that we have employed with us. He worked at this.
Do we have, do we have anyone else that's driven it?
Uh, we've had people that have drove it, yes.
Like, do you have a project that they worked on that we could get an idea of, or?
No, they just, they've just filled in the gravel pit once or twice over the years.
So who else is qualified? I'm, I'm wondering who, what we're, what we're doing as far as a permanent replacement year for that person, or how we're gonna approach that?
Well, we're advertising and I hope we can find somebody.
So you're advertising for a bull, you want someone to operate a bulldozer?
I believe so, yes.
I didn't, I didn't see the ad. Is that what it says on the ad?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
I understand, and I guess he was working on a side hill, but part of the ground collapsed under him or something.
It was super saturated and it gave way and slid the machine.
That's over that Zacco pit up there, right?
Yes, we're all on the same page of why and how it happened and that should never happen again. We're not even gonna work near it, we're working on ways to.
Yeah.
Remove the wash from the situation, if there's a way to do it. If not, I guess we're just gonna go down as deep as we can to water and I guess we'll just give up. There's a lot of good gravel below that water, a lot of good gravel.
That's where the gravel's.
Well, maybe it'll dry up or something.
I don't know. It's the only pit we have that takes on the water like that, so it's a new situation for all of us. You know, um.
Yeah.
Ultimately, at the end of the day, and it's something I wanted to discuss with you guys. Um, I know I was in earlier this year and you guys requested me to get some information on a cost analysis on motor graders versus any other equipment and whatnot. And I just have not had time to get something like that put together. But you know, if we did have an excavator, that is something that we could use to remove that gravel. An excavator is also something that we could use on a lot of our bridge projects cause we just don't have the means for the reach and the mobility of not having a tracked excavator. And, um, I think we've came a long ways with, uh, our engineering firm and the understanding and potentially the ability to be able to drive piling with the excavator if we had one. We did go down, visit with Ottawa County. They were not in favor of loaning us their machine to try it or driving pile in our county. But they did say if they do do some pile driving, they would invite us over so myself and the engineer and bridge foreman or whatever could observe what's going on.
Did you say that was Ottawa?
That's correct.
I, uh, on that gravel situation, I think there is some excellent gravel, uh, up north that is underwater. And I know that, uh, farmers, when they were building a bridge up there, got some excellent gravel by using an excavator they had there on the site to pull it out. So I, you know, that may, we are beginning to run out of surface gravel, so that may be something that we may want to be looking at steadily. And I'm, I'm glad to hear that there is a pit up there that Zacco may have. Cause I knew there is, I think there's some over in Barnard area that would lend themselves to that pretty easily.
You know, and it, it does make it more expensive. You know, it's still a lot cheaper and to me, it's still a better material than just putting rock on a road.
Yeah.
You know, uh, there's a lot of counties that are jealous of the roads that we have based on the fact that we have great, great binding capabilities, and when it binds like that, it sheds water. You know, we might get slick and greasy during a slow rain or for the first year or so after it's installed. But when it's all sudden done, I believe it's a, it's a almost inferior product around here. You know, sometimes we do have to add a little bit of expense to speed up the process of taking that slickness out of that clay by adding some quarry rock and stuff like that, but you know, it, it produces a pretty good road. But, you know, I guess that was my question, you know, is it, is there any way that we'd be able to potentially move on looking at a machine so we can achieve some of these goals, you know?
Am I to understand from what you just said, Michael, that you were, you, you have been mixing quarried rock with the gravel pit gravel?
Uh, not in the pit. When, once it's on the road, we have had to do some of that.
Okay, so a few years ago, when we talked about this, that wasn't really an option, so, so who has been implementing that strategy?
As far as putting the.
Who's choosing, who's choosing which rocks are go, you know, which, which rock substitutes are being put together, about what ratio, et cetera, et cetera?
Uh, we just go in with our belly dumps and twelve yarders and we sugarcoat the top of the slick spots with the one-inch roadstone from quartzite.
So who's coordinating the logistics for that? Is it, I mean, I'm assuming before it was Bob?
Either Bob or I, and right now it's.
Gee, what I. Well, the one issue I had before, remember I, about the clay gravel. And I, uh, you're gonna have some clay and old gravel. It's just that we won't wanna get a lot of it because some of them roads were terrible in clay when they're slim and the people get stuck in a gravel road out here in the middle of a gravel road with a four-wheel drive. Now that's, that's where we need more rock or more sand, something to stabilize that to begin with. That's, well, I don't know how you do that, or your guys, or the road guys, but we need.
Oh, sir Loeman, if I may address that, I've given a lot of advice from quite a few people who have worked in, I'll just call it dirt work, for lack of a better term. Uh, those issues that we're having are base issues, road base issues. And what we need to do is take up about a foot or two of the overtop, the overlayment and really order some larger rock that is, you know, uh, cut for that purpose. About six, you know, six-inch stone, not one-inch stone to sprinkle on top. But we really need to dig up and re-secure some of those issues that we're having a base problem. The road base is what I'm referring to, so there is a way to do that.
Are you talking all roads when they get rebuilt, or just in the areas where we are having some spring issues due to the weather?
I'm talking about what Randy was just addressing. When you get those, those spots where any, everything on top has become so slick that it, the mo- the moisture soaks in and it retains it because of the density of the clay. Then underneath, you don't have a hard surface on, for which it needs to be able to, uh, congeal on top of. Then you get the ruts that are deeper than a truck tire. And, you know, that's happening on some of our main throughways because they're just changing. Like you said, underwater springs, um, maybe there wasn't a thick road surface in a particular area to begin with, a thick road base, I should say. So I'll give you the example of one-twentieth in my area. One that a lot of people have had suggestions and have seen it and driven on it and been a part of its transition over the years. That is a prime example.
Yeah. No, I can understand doing it on a spot like a spring, but rebuilding every road with six-inch base, I don't believe this county can afford that.
Well, we, that'd be extremely expensive if we're gonna.
No, Randy was talking about when you get stuck somewhere. That's not every road throughout the county.
Yeah, that's true, Alexis. There was just some issues, right, where it's bad, really bad in certain areas. You're gonna have a certain amount of clay everywhere, it's just the way it is. I know that because it's gravel road. But it seems like in the last few years, cause I was mail carrier out southeast, and it seemed to be worse in the last five years than before. Maybe it's cause our quality of gravel wasn't as good. And that's probably true, but.
Well, it also has to do with the maintenance. Again, you know, we need to have a little more of a routine system where we have expectations across the board. Because we've had this conversation over and over where certain routes have held up better than others. And it has to do with technique of road service and making sure, I mean, Michael, are you checking if all of the drivers know how to read their, um, greater, uh, I forget what the mechanism is called, but let me check the actual angle, is that called?
Flow meter, I suppose.
Yeah, I mean, are you checking that all of them are putting a certain crown or trying to have the expectation of achieving a goal that way?
When we rebuild a road, yes. You just, over time.
I'm just talking about regular maintenance, so not, not building a road, but.
I understand what you're saying, but you know, you, you lose crown over time, even through proper maintenance. It's going to happen.
That's not true. What you just said is not true.
All right, then.
Let's move on.
You don't lose, you don't lose it with proper maintenance. You can't, you can't put those two terms together, it's an oxymoron.
Let's move on. What else do we have?
I would also like to request that, uh, Jesse Zacco that has been filling in for me receive at least one dollar an hour more interim while he is helping me out.
I think we would need an exec session to discuss the employee, and with Alexis on the phone, I'm very reluctant to hell any executive station about an employee. I hope she will be here next Monday and we will go into exec session to discuss that. We cannot, I do not want to discuss an employee in an exec session.
I will be there personally next week.
What exactly is he doing, Michael, to help you?
Uh, he's doing a lot of work and keeping the crews moving, where they're going and all the stuff they're doing.
Kind of a coordinator of what's going on, then?
Yes.
And scheduling, scheduling what needs to be done tomorrow, the next day? Prioritizing what needs to be done tomorrow and the next day?
Maybe not necessarily prioritizing, but him and I discussed the projects that we're working on, what needs done and who we're gonna send.
Is he still, he wasn't a bridge crew guy, right?
Bridge foreman, yes.
So is he, is he not doing that anymore?
No, he's doing some of that also.
So he's doing that and helping you too?
That's correct.
Okay. So he's doing that much more work?
Yes.
Okay.
So is he putting in more than forty hours?
I don't believe so. And if he is, it's not very much.
I don't have anything else.
Next, Michael, next then.
Um, and I know that Tanner is, well, I'll let you go through your stuff, but.
Okay, last time I was here, we talked about the landfill, uh, potentially, um, put together design for the whole lot. I went ahead and talked to our Wayne Strickfield, he's kind of our landfill engineer. Um, he put together a proposal, um, to do this work, um, so I'll go through it real quick with you. So we broke it out into, let's see, five phases of work. Uh, the first phase is doing a topographic survey, um, so that tells us elevations and kind of the lay of the land. Um, it looks like there is a boundary survey that was always, that was already completed by the last firm, um, so we wanted to do a new boundary survey. Pretty much we go in, get our topographic survey, um, and use that for when we design the new cells, or lay out the new cells. Um, so that'd be the first phase. Uh, the second phase is the preliminary design of the future C and D cells. So that would take in, um, the topographic survey and putting this all on plan sheets for you guys. Laying out the cells, how everything would be laid out in the future. So, um, when this cell, you know, gets close to being full, where would you build the next one? Um, that would show all of this. So there's a phase for the preliminary design, and then also there's a phase for the final design. So K H E, uh, I helped on another one of these projects. You give them a preliminary design, preliminary design, and they usually have three or four stages of comments. Um, so that's what the preliminary design is for. And then the final design would be taking all those comments and then, and developing our actual final design. And then that would get submitted with, uh, K H E, with you guys. It would be approved by K H E, so if they have any future regulations that would come up, you guys would be grandfathered in, um, within approved set of plans. And then, uh, once the final plans are done, um, then they're gonna want a C Q A plan. Um, C Q A stands for Construction Quality Assurance. So we'd have to do one of those before you can go out and dig, dig a new cell.
Now, would you do that for each, as we get ready to do one, we would do that? We don't do it all?
See, I think we would do it for the whole site, so for the whole design.
Okay, so you, all of them would be?
Yeah, yep, 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 yep. And the last stage, uh, so the landfill has to have an F O P, or Facility Operating Plan. Um, so we'd update your facility operating plan with the new drawings or the new plan for that. And if there's any additional services, that could be extra work. So, ooh, you're probably wondering about price. So each of these, um, phases have been broke out with a price. So the total, um, altogether, all five phases was thirty-five thousand three hundred. So, uh, I'll bring you these today. There's two copies. Do you guys wanna review them or move forward with it? It's, it's up to you guys.
So, would we, would this be a year project, or is this a two-year project?
It's gonna take a while, um, so.
So the, so I, I, what, what you're saying is it would encounter more than one budget here?
Yes, yep. So we just, we're just finishing up one in Clark County, another county that I have as a county here, um, just taking two years.
Two years?
Yep, so we're, when we started the survey, um, we actually just got the plans finalized, it took two years for that. And then, um, we're gonna work on the C Q A plan, um, and then updating the F O P.
So we're looking about three budget periods, probably?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So here's these, uh, if you guys wanna look in, sorry, I should've sent them out before, so you guys can look at them. If you guys wanna review it, and then, you know, next month, we can.
Yeah, yeah.
Look at it more, just whatever you guys wanna do.
I think, yeah, when you come back next month.
You have time of it on doing this?
No, just once you sign the contract, then that would be our notice to proceed to begin the work. So, um, we're not authorized to do any work or anything. So, uh, then we can make, we can make Alexis a copy if she wants one to.
You can also email that to me if it's electronic.
Okay.
That is instead of printing it, you can just email.
Okay, yeah, I'll, uh, write that down here. Okay, yeah, Alexis, I'll, I'll send that to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that all you have, Tanner?
Um, I had that, and then, uh, do we wanna talk?
I essentially need to, yes.
Talk about the, the repower and the wind farm? Um, so they sent us. Um so they sent us, they sent us some information on um.
This is kinda brief, neither one of us had a, much time to really study yet, but I wanted to get you guys in the loop and let you kinda know what they're looking at doing.
Yeah, so it looks like they're planning on doing a repower, so replacing the blades, the hub. And did we ever get an answer on if they're gonna replace them in the cell?
Not yet.
Okay, um so I actually do a lot of work with counties and road maintenance agreements. Um we actually have a repower going on in Barber County and they went out and got a separate road maintenance agreement for this. Um and then they're having us do a pre-inspection of the roads and then look at the structures and then do a post-inspection. Um so the pre-inspection would be going and driving the roads, documenting amount of gravel, roadway width, um all that stuff. And then we actually take their component trucks and evaluate each of the structures. Um sometimes these trucks get pretty heavy and the trucks or the structures don't allow it, so then we'd work with them on maybe replacing the structure. Um so that's some, and it's usually a good deal for the county to give their structures.
They pay for it all?
Yeah, so then in the road makes agreement, we would write in, they would reimburse, you know, any of our fees for that, so it'd be free to the county. And also any attorney fees for reviewing their agreements. Um and then the post-construction, once they get done, we pretty much drive the same routes, take pictures, document everything. And then if a road got all the gravel beat out of it, we would say you need to go gravel this road. And then before we, we develop a list of our final acceptance list before they can actually turn everything back over to the county. Um so I can, I can help with this, I didn't know if we wanted to use, you know, the old agreements and put some language that we have used in the past into that. Um and then also, a lot of the counties get a decommissioning agreement, so I don't know if, since it's a repower, I don't know if we could work that into um this?
What does that mean?
So a decommissioning, so um and. So then like thirty years, so typically there's three agreements, there's a pilot agreement, the road maintenance and a decommissioning agreement. And the decommissioning is what happens in thirty or forty years when uh the wind turbine or the, the wind farm.
When it wear out and.
Yeah, they're not using, they're all shut down, both counties don't wanna have the ISO work, so then they come out and.
I think, I think there was one of the landlords that they had to remove those.
Okay.
I think.
So.
I'm just almost sure there is.
Yeah, so that it may be covered in the land lease agreement?
Yeah, I, now I'm not swear, but, but we talked about, we talked about if they were, had to come down, that that's had to be taken, all that stuff had to be taken out and removed and restored.
Then if it's covered in the land lease agreement, then some, there, there, sometimes they're touchy, they don't wanna share leases, cause they may be a little bit.
I know we discussed it, but I don't, I don't know, I don't know where, where that's at.
But as a county, we didn't have an agreement.
I don't think we as a county, I think that was with the, the landowners.
Okay, so it should be covered?
I, I think it is, I, I wouldn't swear to you, but yeah, I, on these, uh when they're redoing these, are we seeing heavier equipment coming in?
So they're gonna bring in some cranes and then.
But I mean more than, is it?
Larger.
Has everything gotten larger since we built ours twenty years ago or ten years ago?
Then the cells are getting larger, yes.
Okay, okay, that's what, that's what I'm wondering.
Now they're up to like three point twos.
So, so we're really going to need, uh our road agreement needs to be updated considerably because it is going to require more, okay, that's what I'm.
More weight?
Yeah, I don't think there's any doubt, we have to have a road agreement.
Yes.
And you're gonna evaluate all of our roads to make sure they'll comply with this new weights and all that?
So that's usually a geotech, I'm a civil engineer, so usually that's up to them. Um so they may come in and some of the wind farm will put down like four inches of like a, a base material, like an S S five or eighty-three material. Um so they can get their vehicles to the site, um thus, we don't do that. Um you know, some counties, I had one county did write in that they will put in four inches of eighty-three and S S five on the roads. And you know, they kinda made them do it, um but it's, it's kinda up to them, um so.
So somebody would be uh making sure that our, we're covered here with them doing this, is what I'm asking, right? In other words, uh they're gonna bring in bigger equipment, bigger in the cells, it's uh heavier stuff. So you said we're gonna have to, not, not you as a civil engineer, but some other engineers gonna confirm that uh everything's okay on our roads and stuff?
Yeah, it ju, it depends on the developer, some of them do go out and do that, so they will put down that base material.
Because we don't want any uh issue out there if something happens.
Right, cause they usually have, so I think these are gonna be Vestas turbines, um so the Vestas has a contract with a transport company. Um and then uh if they can't get the turbine to site, how I understand it, then they start back charging. So if a road blows out and they can't deliver these components the day that they're supposed to, then they start back charging and that, or the, the developer. Um so, yeah, it would be wise if they do do that.
Okay.
Um we, we did have one other developer who just used the roads and it was, it got pretty nasty. We actually put a guy full-time on site to identify issues with the roads and make them fix it.
So we re-signed some contract here to approve all this stuff, that they can do that, is that what you're asking here or telling them?
Yeah, I, I'm pretty much just telling you, when the road maintenance agreement discussions come up, uh I'll help you.
Yeah.
And then I'm not, I usually review documents for free and just so you guys are.
This just, this just phase one, the redoing?
Smoky one and two.
Both phases.
Okay.
That's what I said.
Okay.
You know, their, their goal is, is uh to start doing some road upgrades coming quarter three of this year.
Yeah.
And actually start moving in equipment and materials for the repower quarter one of twenty twenty.
Yep.
So it, it's not too far off, so I wanted you guys to get in the loop on it and.
What, next year or?
So, you know, we'd have to have an R M A in place prior to potentially July one of this year, but um.
You know, there was a question about when, that when they take down the old blades and all that, that they're gonna, I think they're gonna cut them up and haul off, right? Somebody around here was wanting to keep, you got one of those big blades, I think it could put in our park or, as a, like a landmark that we're a wooden tower county or something. Now whether, you guys coordinate with Vestas or whoever's doing this to uh, on what they're doing with that old, old material?
Typically, we don't.
Michael, do you? Could you find out if we could get one of them blades, not me personally, but?
Potentially, yeah.
I think the, somebody with Don didn't, I don't think you knew that, but I think there was a.
We could do some check.
Chamber of Commerce or somebody was asking me about that, why try to get one of them blades and put it out? I don't know, some landmark or something, I don't know if we wanna do that or not, but they were asking.
I don't, there'd be some logistics there, we could look into it for sure.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You know, the perfect man's here and you know, the engine is.
Yeah, see if we could get, and I don't, yeah, hauling it, I don't know how, how like, you know, and I guess you'd have.
I don't think the county is interested in that myself.
No, we could pass it on to whoever's.
Yeah, pass it on to whoever wanted it, I, I'm sorry, I'll, I didn't think the county would be involved in this, right?
Yeah, I, I know there'd be some expense and even relocate.
No, I don't think the county would be involved, it'd be a private thing, yeah. Okay, thanks.
But you know, I, I have started a conversation with them in a goal to find a green home for all those blades and they're gonna recommend it. But to this date, there has not been any recycling done of any turbine blades in the U S that I'm aware of. Everything I've researched and whatnot, you know, and, you know, and, and my goal is, is to hope that they're not sitting in a pasture somewhere, being an ISO and uh we do have the ability to reject them from our landfill. So that is a no-brainer, we would not wanna take that on for our landfill. But you know, but there's a lot of ways that it could happen and I'd like to see them go someplace else and get recycled somehow.
Well, during one of our previous meetings, not maybe with you guys, but with, we had another, several months ago, Don, didn't we have somebody in here about uh the uh, this blades being replaced and then?
Michael was. I was with you on it.
But, but yeah, but then, I thought somebody was saying they'd cut them up and haul them off, the blades.
Uh he said as part of the agreement with whoever repowers, that it will be required that they recycle them.
Okay.
That's their intention.
Okay, okay, you did that, I'm sorry, Michael, yeah.
Okay, was that?
Kinda got you guys in the loop on.
Keep us in the loop and, and certainly we probably will need a meeting with the, with that group of people, whoever they are now, I never know for sure from one day to the next, who's in charge out there.
And now.
And now is still operating.
Email, yeah.
Yeah.
But they have been very good in the past to meet with us and discuss problems.
So I think that's everything I have.
David Bell was in here on Jaguar, there's a bridge, that wooden bridge that we closed.
Yes.
He is wondering if there is a possibility to do something, uh I wouldn't say cheap, but yeah, that's what it is. Cheap, but not, not cheap that it falls down, but I mean, that he could get, we could get rid of the bridge and. Low uh, uh low crossing or a tube or something. I'm not familiar with the drainage of it, that's something that you would have, I know that it's a big structure, it is not safe. And so I didn't know whether that's something that you could look in for, uh just kinda give us an idea of what might hap, what one might have to do.
You've done a look at it, spent a year or two ago.
Yeah, the.
Well, a lot of the water has diverted around that bridge anyway, now.
So a lot of, we do have some other counties that are putting like a, you know, cheaper option, um doing like low water crossing, pour concrete slab and you drive some.
And lift Ford or something?
Yeah, you put a smaller pipe, so low flows, it goes under the, but when it rains, it goes over for a little while. Um so you, you do a concrete slab with a head wall and then you actually drive some sheet piling just for, so it, water can't undermine the structure. Um Lincoln County, we have a lot of deep, deep structures, so if you do that, you gotta pull the road really far down.
Yeah.
Um so we'll go look at it.
Okay, I uh, you know, it, it's a, it's a flat area of the county.
Good.
Okay, okay.
And the water is changing courses constantly.
Yeah, it's uh, it diverts all over.
It's about a ten to twelve foot deep channel, bank to bank.
Yeah.
Um so yeah, you're gonna cut back quite a ways.
Yeah.
You know, but if we do something like that, you know, I think all landlords need to get on board and understand the consequences of a low water crossing.
Yeah.
You know, they, they, they are cheap to put in, but they're not cheap to maintain, I will tell you that. You know, unless you build them right the first time with sheet piling and concrete to a point to wherever time water over tops, that you're not replacing all your material.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree with you, I think.
Did you re-explain why they're, why they're not cheap to maintain? Could you re-explain that? I, I didn't hear exactly what you said there.
If you, if you just try to use a earth and rock low water crossing in some of these high flow areas, the water will actually wash them away and then you have to go back and replace material every time water over tops. And when that happens, it does tend to get kind of expensive over the years, you know, during a drought period, you know, yeah, they're cheap. You know, you might go five years and never having to do anything. But you know, you take uh what we call the low water, low water crossing out here southeast of town. You know, we fixed it probably five, six times in the last year. You know, we have the uh crossing into that washes out numerous times a year. And you know, we're talking a lot of maintenance, you know, we got a haul equipment out there and we gotta reclaim some of that and sometimes we have to bring in other material.
And if there's water there, they get soft and they sink.
Yes.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that um Tanner, I think we'd like you to come up with a proposal on paper of what our options are and give us a spreadsheet of the specs, you know, with an X deep channel and a Y span. Your option is E, do you understand what I'm going, where I'm going with that?
So you would like um a couple of different options, um so one being a low water crossing and then one being a probably a bridge sized structure and then costs for each of those?
Yeah, and I, I'm going further than, I mean, I'm glad Mr. Wallace brought this up with David Bell's concern for his, his bridge, but I'm going further than that. I was suggesting to the commission last week that we haven't been maybe utilizing your skills or giving you enough direction and I would like to see us lead you in the direction where you can give us a standardized set of options so that when our bridge crew comes across a ten-foot channel on a twelve-foot culvert that needs replaced or even a bridge structure that could be reduced to that span with some sort of low water crossing, as you suggested earlier, pouring concrete, even if it means reshaping the grade of the road to enter a new bridge. Um I think you could probably with your skill set easily give us a spreadsheet of what those three options could be as far as how big of a structure can we do this as far as replacing something that is inadequate or obsolete with X, Y, or Z, including, you know, um the poured, the poured concrete, not necessarily just creating a natural low water crossing.
Okay, so each, so typically when we replace a structure, we run some sort of hydraulics on it? Um and so that, just to determine, you know, what the existing structures are now, typically we like to get a five to ten year storm um through like, you know, one of the bridges. Um yes, so each, each side is a little bit different, um and then, you know, you gotta get the permits also. So like a low water crossing, if, if, if we wanna move forward with that, usually I email all of them parks, uh we had one county.
I'll, I'll give you a better example, if Mr. Bell would like his bridge structure, which is, I guess it's under twenty feet because it's not listed on, correct? Okay, so let's say it's seventeen feet across and, and you take the specs on that, regardless of what you're going to do on that particular site, there has to be a way to find three or four similar bridges so that when we're doing that particular work with our crew and we're ordering that particular material, we can do three to four at a time and not just do one at a time. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I, I, I think I'm starting to understand what you're asking, so like right now, I put together, um like on this all system one oh five, I put together, you know, a plan sheet um showing, you know, a steel beam structure that we use and Michael can use it, you know, from span length zero to thirty foot. Um so you're thinking maybe also maybe a plan sheet from thirty to fifty foot bridge and maybe a plan sheet for a low water crossing?
Yeah.
And then.
I mean, cost is always an issue and it's going to be an issue, you know, government spending should be considered um needing to be efficient and, and we know that we're only going to get a certain amount of money at any given time, just like we rejected for the last one that we applied for. So the issue is, what are we going to be able to do in-house with our own crews and with a, with a numeric amount that we can purchase in materials to transition some of these obsolete, closed down bridges into something that's still usable? Because Mr. Bell's is just an example of an entire classification of problematic bridges that we have in our county.
Okay, so then.
Do you understand what I'm saying by that?
Yeah, so then like on.
We're not, we're not interested in the top end bid for replacing it the most expensive way. We need to know what our options are for this type of conversion, I'm gonna use the word conversion, from a bridge to some sort of crossing. And then we need to apply that, say we have three options to do it, we need to apply those three options to any variety of those same issues in that same area at the same time.
So like if the average daily traffic's less than fifty people a day, um when you get some other roads that are getting, you know, two hundred and fifty, the smaller, the smaller, or those roads with the smaller traffic, would then we do like low water crossing?
Right, right.
Yeah, because there's a lot of little bridges out here, some farmer, there might be only two farmers use one bridge uh.
Right.
Eighty percent of the time because they're up in the middle of nowhere and we, we want a cheaper, cheaper uh way to do that. Impossible, I know you gotta comply with all your rules and regulations, the safety, but if we could do that cheaper, that would be handy. Because a lot of those people don't, I mean, they get very little traffic, obviously your main routes do, but.
Right.
But she's like this day Bell one, I bet there isn't, I bet there isn't one vehicle go across that day, on average.
But it doesn't change the way that it has to meet standards.
Standards, I know.
To make it passable.
Can't you still?
I, I honestly.
That's why we've hired an engineer to know what those standards are and to get an equation that works for us.
Understand that, but I, I have almost a hard time believing that a low water crossing built properly is gonna be any cheaper than building a steel structure that we can do completely in-house.
Well, that's what the analysis will show.
Yeah, we will.
Well, we'll have, we'll have Tanner, you check in on us. Yeah, we will, well, we'll have, we'll have Tanner, you check in on us, I, if we could do them cheaper. Maybe we should, maybe we can't, maybe Michael's right, I don't know.
And then like, like low water crossings, um, the, the main people that dictate that is like Walloping Parks, so if. We had one county that went and, went and just did a low water crossing, well, there's a dangerous species. So they actually were gonna get sued, because they were, they weren't allowing the fish to swim upstream. The low water crossing is actually preventing them from doing that, um, so that would be another thing I guess we have to look at is to see, you know, what creeks have.
But like where this bridge is, that's like a little, little side creek, that's, it's dry half the time.
Yeah, and, and that's.
Well, but there's, you don't have your fish swimming upstream, well, yes, you do. Dry ninety-five.
Yeah, see, that's the fight that, you know, to be honest, I've been fighting Walloping Parks about that, because.
Well, yeah, they got a mud hole out here and I'm calling out a pond and it's now a dangerous species, right? I know, it's insane.
They were making us bury a box of foot, well, that just adds, because you gotta make the box a foot taller, but the channel's dry. So I called and I was like, there's no fish in this channel, why, why are you, why are we having to do this?
There may be ten years from now.
They said, well, there may be some higher flows and then push waters. And then those Arkansas daughters where fish they like to spawn in the vegetated line bottoms. Well, when the waters come up, they're vegetated, they're lying, because they used to have grass and so they like to spawn in those and that's what their counter was.
Whatever.
Yeah, we just gotta follow.
You gotta follow the law.
Yeah, we gotta follow.
You gotta follow the law, yeah, what they comply with, I know that, you got to.
Yeah, so I'll, uh, I'll look at a low water crossing option and maybe coming up with, you know, if this is a minor collector, has less than fifty vehicles a day. We could do a low water crossing and it'd be this much, something like that.
Right.
If it's a major, if it's a major collector and it's got a hundred vehicles a day, um, and it's forty foot long, we could do this option.
Exactly, exactly.
You got it, you got it, yes.
I understand it now.
Yeah.
Yeah, you got it.
Okay, yeah.
In other words, if we can still comply with law, but do it cheaper, let's do it cheaper. And I'm, I'm not saying be cheap, but try to save us money, the county money, we should all be up for it.
Paper where those standards exist because there is so much going on in the county that's out of our view. And, and we can't necessarily just keep doing one particular project at a time. We really need to look at a comprehensive plan and you have the ability to structure that data in. Into a spreadsheet that we can then start making some overall assessments.
Okay, yeah, let me work on this and it'll probably be, yeah, I'll try to get some kind of graph for him.
Okay.
For you guys to review and then Michael's obviously his opinion.
Sure.
And then maybe the bridge Jesse's, yeah, okay, yep.
Anything else?
Thanks, guys, have a good day.
Thank you very much.
You all have a great year. You too.
Don, this folder that you gave me, I pretty well screwed it up probably, so I'm gonna need your help. You have what we don't have appointed and what needs to be appointed and that's my problem.
I have that, we have one position on Beverly Rural Fire, one position on First Rural Fire. When a rural fire has two, seven drum has two. Then the Lincoln County Repeater Board has three, the Hospital Board of Trustees has one. Transportation Bus has two, Crime Victims Restitution has one, Preservation Board has three. Um, Children's Healthcare Endowment Fund, one, and Windpower Economic Development Board, one.
But the one on the econo, on Webb is in third district, right?
Yes. But we, that was Jason's.
Yeah, and this one is. Four hundred East Lincoln. So that would be in Randy's.
Yeah, first district.
Yes.
Um, I have. Crime Restitution Board, you have one?
Yes.
And I have one application. Okay, and you have one for Hospital Board and Randy said that he had somebody contact him, so we'll have to wait on that one, right?
Yeah, I'll get a, uh, written, uh, request.
And did we appoint somebody to Delia Pitters?
Yes, you appointed Terry Pitters.
All right, that one, okay, that's why you have these paperclip then.
Yes.
Okay, they're taken care of.
Yes.
All right.
Now.
And I have two people that would like the, uh, First Rural Fire and that's all I have today.
So you have a First Rural Fire and a, um, Crime Victims Restitution?
Yes, Charlie Newell has asked to be on the, uh, Crime Restitution Board, he wants to continue to serve. Do I have a motion to reappoint him?
Is that moved?
It's been moved to appoint, you have a second?
I'll second.
Moved to appoint Charlie Newell to, uh, Crime Restitution Board, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, where am I at? Oh, First Rural Fire, Steve McReynolds has one. He was a volunteer fireman for First Rural Fire and hit the retirement age and so he's retired. He would like to be appointed to the First Rural Fire and I have one from Glenn Mollum, is that how you say that, Don?
Mollum.
Mollum, I'd like to submit my interest for the position of board member for the Lincoln County First Rural Fire District. I'd be interested in being a board member of the Lincoln County Repeater Board as well. Oh, as well as a, oh, he's got lots of it, Crime Victims Restitution Board. I would suggest we put him on the repeater board and put Steve on the fire district. Get rid of, we said we need three on the repeater board, don't we?
Yes.
Uh.
Now Glenn is an officer, but I can't see that there would be a conflict.
An officer at.
Law enforcement officer.
He's a law.
Law enforcement officer.
Deputy.
So you don't see that there would be.
I would, I would think that that would work better for the repeater board than it would Lincoln Rural Fire, because if he's on duty. Well, I guess he's, this isn't respond to the fire, but.
No, it's just.
You have any questions, Alexis?
Um, what was the third thing he had First Rural Fire repeater board in what?
Crimes restitution board and we just got through pointing Charlie to that, I didn't notice that when I was looking through these, I just read the first line. I didn't read the rest of his sentence.
So, okay, okay, so you're suggesting repeater board?
I assess him for repeater board and McReynolds for First Rural Fire. That would be my suggestions.
You don't think he should be on Crime Victims Restitution?
We already filled it.
Oh, it is.
Charlie, we already pointed Charlie.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, so we're, yeah, Steve for the Rural Fire, I agree, I agree with Al Joe.
That would be a, that would put one of them on each.
I'll make a motion to, uh.
Let's do one at a time.
Okay, we'll do one at a time, I'll do a motion to, uh, nominate Steve McReynolds for the, uh. First Rural Fire District Board.
I second, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 And, there's a.
And I, uh, and this is Mr. Glenn Mollum, I agree with Al Joe, I think too, we've already did the rural district and the, uh. Crime Victims Restitution Board, so I will nominate, uh, or, uh, make a motion to nominate Mr. Glenn Mollum. To the Lincoln County Repeater Board.
Second.
Second, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, that's, that's Weber for the Hospital Board and that's, uh, the Windpower that she's not in the right district.
How long you seconded that, right?
Uh, Alexis seconded that last one.
Yes.
Okay.
On these wind tower issues, you better get you an attorney in here and listen to this stuff. Because I'm following this issue down in Reno County and Southern Elsworth Rice County. There are issues that are coming up that are very serious, the wind power companies are hiding issues. These wind towers are being put in areas where they're not allowed, there's a three mile radius around Teeny Lake. Wind power company, oh no, we're not putting any in there, well, they found them out, they said, oh yes, they're inside. This is a serious issue, you better get you a legal attorney in here, I'm just suggesting, I can tell me what to do, but this is getting.
These are, these are already there too, Norman, that, those others are new ones, they're, they're trying to put in.
Yes.
And they're having trouble in Marion County, Marion County Commissioner has been in contact with me too, they're having trouble in Marion County, but. Uh, uh, if, if they become. More, yes, I think you're right, we're going to, to need some answers, Norman, but, uh, these are basically upgrading them. I guess is what you're saying, they're already here, so, uh, but we need a, a road agreement, we need to protect ourselves. We need to protect ourselves from the junk that may be from the old ones and things like that, but, uh. Yeah, they are having some problems in establishing where those farms are supposed to be.
When you repower this tower, that changes the structure of the contract.
Well, if, if we, our, our contract, that's with the landlord, we don't have a contract for the tower. We're not zoned, so that landlord lord can basically, or the landowner can basically do what he wants to. What we're interested in is our roads and our infrastructure that we have to be very careful for and we're also interested in the tax consequences of those. Too, so.
This, this is a mess, fellas.
What isn't a mess in this world?
Well, it's.
It's I you. You're not a mess.
I take offense to that because you understand things as I.
Okay.
I did forget one thing.
Oh, okay, Don, you're good.
The city of Lincoln is having their cleanup days today and tomorrow when they forgot to ask for, for permission to get free. Waiver for disposing of the landfill, so, um, Heather called and asked if I would ask you guys that. Would you guys agree to dispose the stuff at the landfill?
We have, done that in the past for the cities, haven't we?
Yes, every year.
My, I have a question, do we do that, is that policy for government entities is free? I know we've done like, um, five oh one C three nonprofit at a reduced rate.
Well, that's for the construction demolition, so that would be disposing of.
Like the CD, okay, this is just to take it up to the landfill.
Yes, basically they're picking up people's junk and taking it, or they have trash that they can't take or furniture.
Right, but, but we are paying for that one's just the saliva, correct?
Correct.
We pay for the load, yeah. It's a beautification.
It's always been in the past that they've waived the fees to governmental agencies to help their, their communities keep cleaned up.
And we only do it once a year, don't we, Don?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do we do that for every town, Beverly Barn or all of them?
Yes.
Yes, yes, we would.
Do you do that for county people too?
You already paid yours, when you paid your taxes.
So if we take a bunch in though, they don't charge extra?
No, we do if it's CD.
If it's CD stuff, but if it's stuff that's going to the landfill now, you paid your fee, when you paid your taxes.
So like if they take in, like, I know Elsworth takes in tires and stuff.
Oh, tires are different.
Tires are actually.
Tires can't go to the landfill.
Well, they can, but they're charged.
I was gonna say they do.
Uh, no, I meant to the, to the landfill and saliva, they have to be disposed of different.
Right, and I don't think the city allows any tires.
Yeah, I don't, we don't.
They normally don't pick up anything that we don't dispose of to residents for free, occasionally they get a few faded boards and pallets.
Is the city picking it up for free and transporting it for free?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so basically it's for those people that don't have vehicles to get their stuff out, so like there may be a couch that's been sitting on a. On a street lot for months, they go and they pick that up for them. And they, they sort it and so like the white goods go into the metal pile and so on and so forth. But normally most businesses we charge to go past the scale.
But now, does the city, does the city, the city, um, property has already paid its property tax for the yearly landfill bill, correct?
Correct.
Well, then, then we're really, then we really don't even need to approve it, right, because they're, they're basically, it's as if. The trucks are delivering it instead of the person itself.
Yes.
Uh-huh, okay, so just of morality, really, anyone could drop this stuff off for free.
Correct, but the city always asks since it's them going across and we build.
And it's all at one time, yeah, I understand, okay.
I, I, I think we just approve it.
Yes, I approve the.
You want a motion or you want just to prove it?
Oh, we can just approve, that's right.
I think, I think you just said it, Commissioner, give the blessing.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Well, Don, is that the last thing you thought of?
Yes.
Okay, and I haven't thought of anything either.
And so we're not having a special meeting, we're going to wait until Monday to reorganize our human resources offer?
Yes, I think so, in that time, maybe we will have to do an offer for EMS too as well.
Okay. Okay.
All right, this commission stands at your heard and tell. Well, I don't know what I'm gonna say, because we are gonna be here tomorrow, but it will only be interviews, it'll be closed session. So we will meet on Monday, the twenty ninth, ten o'clock.
Don, don't forget that we have to give the notify list notification of our meeting tomorrow, though.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Reminding me because I might have not remembered that.
One tomorrow, right?
One o'clock tomorrow, yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Lynn.